Good evening, everyone. It's six o'clock and we're going to call to order this meeting of the Gallatin City Council for February 5th, 2019. We're going to begin this meeting like we do each meeting with the invocation and the pledge of allegiance. Councilman Alexander is going to offer the invocation and Vice Mayor Camp is going to lead us in the pledge. If you'll stand with me, please.
Letter of your heart, pray. Tell God, once again, we come to say thank you for this beautiful day that I have created. We thank you, dear Lord, for this city and all this is official. We pray, God, that everything we say and do tonight in this place will be pleasing in your sight. In Jesus' name I do pray in every heart, say, "Amen."
(Inaudible)
Now, Ms. Kittrell, if you would call the roll for us, please.
Vice Mayor Camp.
Present.
Mr. Alexander.
Present.
Mr. Fann.
Here.
Mr. Fennell.
Here.
Mr. Hayes.
Present.
Ms. Love.
Here.
And Mr. Overton.
Present.
We have a quorum, Mayor.
Thank you. Next, before you have the minutes for the January 15th, 2019 council meeting, we have a motion to approve by Councilman Overton.
Second.
Second by Councilman Alexander. Are there any additions, corrections, changes? Ms. Love says they look good.
(Inaudible).
Oh, I bet she is.
She didn't have to have a reading today.
With that, all in favor of approving the January 15th, 2019 meetings, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. It does pass unanimously. Now it's time for public recognition on agenda-related items. This is the time of the meeting where anyone who is here who has an item of interest that's on this evening's agenda may come forward. We ask that you introduce yourself, give us your address, and then you may speak for five minutes on the topic of your concern. I will also remind everyone here this evening that there are four public hearings. Three are public hearings on Wildcat Run, and that may sound redundant because, yes, we have done those before, but we're doing them again because they were not properly noticed the first go-round. So we're having those public hearings again to make sure that the public does have the opportunity and were noticed in time to do that. The fourth public hearing is on the Meadow Glen at Fairway Farms. So if you want to speak on those issues, you should do it under those public hearings. Otherwise, public hearing on agenda-related items is now open and you may come forward at this time.
Mayor Brown, fellow members of the council there or anyway, I would just like to voice my concern about, there seems to be a...
Your name and address.
Oh, my name is Charles Timothy Durham, 926 Johnson Street, Gallatin, Tennessee. I see a lot of construction as far as houses being built. I don't see a lot of construction for, say, other things like shopping malls or, you know, something like that. I mean, I would like to see a large shopping mall, something like what they have done at Providence in Mount Gillett, or, you know, at least something as large as Opry Mills. And, you know, I don't have the money to actually do this myself, but I would like to see something other than housing. I think we've got a lot of housing, but people want to do things and there's not a lot of, you know, things to do. And some of the housing that, you know, seems to be built, seems to be, look like, you know, cheap houses, and then we've got some houses that look like, you know, they are nicer houses, like, you know, Durham Farms in Hendersonville. There's some nice houses being built out towards Cotton Town. And, you know, I'm just concerned about so much emphasis being on housing. That's all I have to say.
Thank you. I will tell you, too, that there is a time at the end of the meeting where you can speak to items that are not on the agenda, and so there's an opportunity to do that at the end of the meeting as well. Is there anyone else wishing to speak under public recognition on agenda-related items? You may come forward at this time if so. I see no one indicating that they wish to speak, so I will declare public recognition on agenda-related items closed, and we will move on now to Mayor's comments. I do have a couple of announcements. Very importantly, Councilman Craig Hayes' birthday was last Friday, so I wish him a belated happy birthday. This Friday, Benny Adams is having, Benny Adams was a police officer with Gallatin Police Department for many years, and he has retired after forty-six years? Is that right?
Yeah.
Forty-six years?
Forty-five. I better check.
Okay. Forty-five or forty-six years, a lot of years of service to the city of Gallatin. So there is a celebration this Friday from 11:00 to 1:00 at the Gallatin Civic Center. And council, you do have a list of all the events coming up, so you might want to add those to your own calendar. The only other thing I had this evening is some special recognition. I'm going to ask that Reese Nicholson and his family and Chief John Bandi join me at the podium, please. This evening, we have the opportunity for some very special recognition. Some of you have probably had the opportunity to meet Reese Nicholson. I know certainly our police department has and Chief Bandi has, and that's why I asked him to be up here. In case you're unaware, Mr. Nicholson, as part of his Eagle Scout project, or as his Eagle Scout project, constructed in Triple Creek Park, it's right there on the left when you go in the park, a memorial for fallen law enforcement officers. And it is a beautiful monument in a very nice garden setting. And to hear him, actually to see the steps that you went through to design and the process of constructing and all the people who participated, truly a great effort on your part. And we want to say thank you, and we want to do that by issuing this proclamation, and I'll go ahead and read it to you. And Mr. Nicholson has indicated that he does not wish to say anything, so I'll let you say thank you, and that will be all. And Chief Bandi doesn't wish to say anything either, but I'm going to read this proclamation, and I hope this tells you more about his efforts. This says, "Whereas Reese Nicholson is a resident of Gallatin, Tennessee, and a senior at Station Camp High School, and whereas he runs track and cross-country and enjoys painting, drawing, and other forms of art, and whereas Reese is also a member of the Boy Scout Troop 425 of the First Presbyterian Church in Gallatin, and whereas he has earned forty-two merit badges, is the first member in his troop to receive the Dolphin Society Award, and is also in Scouting's National Honor Society, the Order of the Arrow, and whereas Reese, along with help from local businesses and volunteers, constructed a monument in Triple Creek Park to honor fallen police officers for his Eagle project, and whereas on August 3rd, 2018, at the age of seventeen, he has fulfilled the requirements for Eagle Scout, the highest achievable rank in Boy Scouts. Now therefore, I, Paige Brown, Mayor of the City of Gallatin, do hereby honor and recognize Reese Marshall Nicholson for his accomplishments and being a role model to others." So, congratulations. (Applause). Now, we can move on to the regular agenda, and the first item on the agenda this evening is public hearing on Resolution R-1811-68, and for that, I recognize Councilman Overton.
Thank you, Mayor. This is Resolution City of Gallatin, Summerton County, Tennessee, adopting a plan of service for annexation of 12.35 acres, partial, tax map 114, partial, oh, four, seven, dash, oh, one, located north of Highway 25 and west of Wildcat Run, and providing for an effective date, and this is a public hearing.
Public hearing on Resolution R-1811-68 is now open. It would be the time to come forward, introduce yourself, give us your address, and speak under public hearing. I see no one indicating they wish to speak, so I'll declare public hearing on Resolution R-1811-68 closed. Moving on to Item Two, which is public hearing on Resolution R-1811-69. Councilman Overton.
Thank you, Mayor. This is Resolution City of Gallatin, Summerton County, Tennessee, adopting a plan of service for annexation of 12.35 acres, partial, tax map 114, partial, oh, four, seven, dash, oh, one, located north of Highway 25 and west of Wildcat Run, and providing for an effective date, and this is a public hearing.
Public hearing on Resolution R-1811-68 is now open. It would be the time to come forward, introduce yourself, give us your address, and speak under public hearing. I see no one indicating they wish to speak, so I'll declare public hearing on Resolution R-1811-68 closed. Moving on to Item Two, which is public hearing on Resolution R-1811-69. Councilman Overton.
Thank you, Mayor. This is Resolution City of Gallatin, Summerton County, Tennessee, annexing 12.35 acre partial, tax map 114, partial, oh, four, seven, dash, oh, one, located north of Highway 25 and west of Wildcat Run, and to the city of Gallatin, authorizing annexed property to be indicated on official zoning atlas, authorizing assignment of annexed property to council district, repealing conflict of orders, providing for severability, and providing for an effective date, and this is a public hearing.
Okay. Public hearing on Resolution R-1811-69 is open. You may come forward at this time. I see no one indicating they wish to speak, so we will declare public hearing on Resolution R-1811-69 closed. Item Three is public hearing on Ordinance Number O1811-61. Councilman Overton.
Thank you, Mayor. This is Order City of Gallatin, Summerton County, Tennessee, rezoning 12.35 acre partial from Agar Culture Residential District to MU Mixed Use District, located north of Highway 25 and west of Wildcat Run, and approving a preliminary master development plan for Cumberland Point, containing 100 attached townhomes, residential lots, six open space tracts, and three public right-of-ways on 27.86 acres, located north of Highway, south of Highway 25 and west of Wildcat Run, authorizing the revision to be indicated on official zoning atlas, repealing conflict of orders, and providing for severability, and providing for an effective date, and this is a public hearing.
So this is public hearing on Ordinance O1811-61, and you may come forward.
Good evening. Suzanne Simon, 417 Franciscan Way. I have a prepared statement I'd like to read, if I may. Whoops. Okay. As stated in the petition submission at the first public hearing on the Cumberland Point development, several of our constituents, of your constituents, excuse me, have traffic concerns. With the Albert Gallatin Extension Interchange bringing even more traffic over to 109 just prior to Highway 25, the traffic will be even more congested than it already is in the area. Please remember that as you make your decision on this development. When meeting with the developers on Thursday, January 24th, they confirmed the density on just the one parcel of land on the north side of Highway 25 would be a density of eight-point-something dwelling units per acre. So I was correct. It is basically double the density it should be for the area if you eliminate the parcel of land on the south side of Highway 25. Bill, the head of planning and zoning, did confirm at the meeting that they would not approve the initial development proposal without the parcel of land across the street because it was, in fact, too dense to meet the character of the area. In my research, I discovered the city did allow the developer of Cumberland Point to use 2,000 instead of 3,000 to obtain their density figure of 4.6 dwelling units per acre. And just to be clear, this is an exact quote from the submission posted on the October 22nd Planning Commission Agenda Minutes regarding this development. The owner and applicant request an exception to allow for a minimum lot size of 2,000 square feet rather than the required 3,000 square feet required in the mixed-use zone per a particular section of the Gallatin zoning ordinance. The proposed density of the development is 4.6 dwelling units per acre, whereas the maximum allowable density in the mixed-unit district is one unit per 3,000 square feet, which is 14.5 dwelling, five-two dwelling units per acre, which means, if I understand correctly, they are putting more structures on less square footage than they should. So not only are they putting double the density on one side of the street than they should, they are also putting more structures per square footage as well. We ask that if you decide to approve this development that you require that they use the same code restrictions that all the other developers in the area are required to adhere to for mixed use. Also, in the meeting on January 24th, the developer stated they could build these townhomes on the south side of the street if they wanted to right now. So based on that, my recommendation is that they split the townhomes in half and build half on the south side of Highway 25 and half on the north side of Highway 25, and have green space on both sides. That way, no one will have to cross a heavily traveled stretch of road, and everyone stays safe. Currently, the proposed main entrance of Cumberland Point is between two hills on Highway 25, which are blind spots for drivers from both sides. It just seems too dangerous a plan to have families crossing there no matter how many lights and rumble strips you put in to alert drivers. Splitting the towns homes fixes these issues. In addition, please do not allow this development to connect at Beck's Place as Twin Eagles has far more than 100 homes accessing that one entrance-exit. Therefore, Cumberland Point can utilize one entrance-exit as Twin Eagles has had to for several years, and there are approximately 400 homes in Twin Eagles. Please do not make our problem worse by adding more to our entrance-exit. More homes are being developed in Twin Eagles, so that should be reason enough to keep our subdivision closed to more traffic because these new Cumberland Point residents will use Wildcat Run to return home, without a doubt. And any back entrance-exit to Twin Eagles is years away, and perhaps 100 or more additional houses away from being added. And since Twin Eagles is right up against Highway 109, I don't see that our part of planning and zoning's connectivity at Beck's Place is that crucial. There is precedent regarding stipulations made by the city council when approving zoning changes. A few years ago, a developer wanted to put in a car dealership next to Kroger, right in front of the Savannah subdivision. The residents fought back, and the city council approved the zoning change with stipulations such as no loudspeakers, no bright lights, and such. You can do the same here. Please note, there are people who have signed the petition who could not attend the meeting this evening, and those who have signed are counting on you, our representatives, to consider our requests. Please take this into consideration as you make your decision. In addition, I have a document I'd like to submit. This document states there are deed restrictions on this property for 25 years from the date on the document, so they may not actually be able to do this development on this property. Therefore, you may want to defer until this can be reviewed, and I'd like to submit these in record, my statement, as well as that document, and thank you for your time and your consideration.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak under public hearing for this?
This time, I'm going to take my time because I don't like to speak to people. I've spent thirty-seven years of my life writing the dossiers, and not the ones you've heard about in the news, but the ones, the other ones. I've never had to stand in front of people and speak about them.
Okay, introduce.
I left that up to...
Introduce yourself and give us your address.
My name is John Germaine, and I live at 471 Lucy Circle. And first, I would like to ask a question, which I asked last week to three different people, and did not get an answer. I asked the question, basically, why is it that you would need to go down and into Twin Eagles and then down to Beck, through Beck's Place, and open up a road into the new, I will call, subdivision of townhouses? Could somebody here this week tell me why they have to do that?
Mr. Germaine, this is a public hearing. It's not a question-and-answer period. Certainly, our engineering and planner can help you with that properly after the meeting, so you don't have to wait.
Okay. Well, then I understand from reading your own documents that they're going to annex the sewer between the townhouses and Twin Eagles. Now, we already have a problem with water and sewer. In fact, I have a letter, and Randy Jones doesn't know it, but he agreed with me that I have a problem in front of my home. And I was told at the meeting last week that the reason for the problem is that the gradation, the way you have, according to specifications, back then, when Randy Jones built his homes, did not have to meet the specifications they do now. What is going to be different if we increase the capacity of runoff in water and sewage and actually annex both for Randy Jones? And are we responsible for that increase in any way? And will we be, in the future, responsible for it? I agree with her about the deed. I looked into the deed, too. There's problems with that piece of property. Not all of it, but some of it. It might be deeded and might not be deeded correctly. It might have a problem being annexed in the long run. But I would like to ask a question. Has the Water and Sanitation Department submitted a review approval for this annexation of... So I'm not going to get an answer to this street, which I already have an answer to. But is there an approval for that?
All of our department heads can help you this evening with your respective questions. David Gregory is down there on the end.
Okay, I've got so many more, and I might even get used to liking this.
Well, this is...
And then you won't like me, and I like you, and so I'm going to buy this.
No, no, no. I'm just, part of the call is, this is a public hearing, not a question-and-answer, so we're supposed to be hearing what you have to say, and you state your opinions on this.
Okay, I guess, then I'm going to get a little philosophical, like everybody does sometimes. I don't need my house. You know, I've got two others in the States and two outside the United States. I've never been to the South before. My wife found this place at Randy Jones on her own because she flies and she could look over and look down. I love it here. I love the South, and I love Gallatin. Nobody knows me. I can live in my little house, which is really nicely built, and Randy Jones makes a good home. He really does. You have to fight with him a little bit, but that's, I like the old man, and I'm older than him, so I can say that. But I really hope that when the city looks at what's happened, because in 2011, when I was first going to retire, I bought a home, and then in Murphisboro, and then I sold it because it got so crowded and busy there. Then my wife and I came back, and we looked at Hendersonville, and it was so bad compared to 2011, 2015, because we went overseas again. Now it's 2015, that she somehow find on herself Gallatin. I really hope the city stays the way it is. The people are nice, the city is nice, the mayor's fantastic, and I'm not going to say anymore except that, since there are so many unanswered questions right now, I think we should hold off any vote on this until some of these answered questions are, in fact, verified, especially the problem with water and sewage and how it affects my home in front of my house where nobody can find me. So thank you, and I am liking this.
Well, you're welcome back anytime. Thank you, Mr. Germaine. Anyone else wishing to speak in this public hearing?
Hi, how are you all doing today? My name is Jacob Timmy, and I'm also a resident of Twin Eagles. I live at 199 Beacon Street in the back of the neighborhood. I'm one of, actually, the few people in the neighborhood, I say few people, there's a lot of people in the neighborhood that do commute to work, but I actually go to work at about 7:00 in the morning. And after our meeting this last week, I did try to look out in the neighborhood and take pictures of traffic coming over the hill, and it actually was shocked me because, of course, there was a couple of days that the school was not in session, but overall, the traffic was fairly sparse coming over the hill with plenty of time to get out. I might have caught the lights right, but overall, I do want to say, I want to stress the importance of the intersection of 109 and 25. I really hope that that little section can get developed, and I know that there's a state project with TDOT as well, and I really hope that that project gets developed in a timely manner so that when these do, these townhomes come in and the connection with the other subdivision, that the, it can handle the proper traffic coming over that hill and especially that subdivision. There's a pothole that's probably about four feet deep on the side of 25 right now that, you know, I probably escape it by inches probably half the time going to work. But obviously, that's my main concern, and I thank you all for putting so much of this forum together, and thank you all for y'all's time.
Thank you. Anyone else? Public hearing's still open. Okay, I see no one indicating they wish to speak, so I'm going to say public hearing on Ordinance O1811-61 is closed, and Item Four is another public hearing, this one on Ordinance O1811-62, but it's Councilman Overton again.
Thank you, Mayor. This is Order City of Gallatin, Summerton County, Tennessee, approving an amendment to master development plan for Fairway Farms and an amendment preliminary master development plan for Meadow Glen at Fairway Farms located south of Highway 25 and west of 109 and north along Holly Pike, authorizing provision to be indicated on official zoning atlas, repealing conflict of ordinances, providing for severability, and providing for an effective date, and this is a public hearing.
Public hearing on Ordinance O1811-62 is now open. You may come forward at this time if you wish to speak. See no one indicating that they wish to speak, so I'll say public hearing on Ordinance O1811-62 is closed. Item Number Five is Resolution R-1811-68. Councilman Overton.
Thank you, Mayor. This is Resolutions of Gallatin, City of Gallatin, Summerton County, Tennessee, adopting a plan of service for annexation of 12.35 acre partial, tax map 114, partial, oh, four, seven, dash, oh, one, dot, oh, one, located north of Highway 25, west of Wildcat Run, and providing for an effective date, and I so move.
Motion by Councilman Overton, second by Councilman Camp, opening it for discussion.
Vice Mayor.
I'm sorry, Vice Mayor Camp. I will get used to that. Anyone wishing to discuss? Mr. McCord, do you want to answer some of the questions that were asked?
This is a plan of service, this resolution. The utilities and infrastructure has been reviewed by a number of departments in the city, and the main comments that I heard, one was about sewer and water capacity, and utilities departments capable of serving this area, and they have indicated so. The other is primarily about the streets and the condition of the streets, and those are, I think those were brought to attention with the council, really involved TDOT's roadway, as opposed... Now, there was a comment about the interconnectedity, but that's not necessarily related to the plan of services. It would be the master plan.
You can go ahead and address that, though, if you want.
I might go ahead and do that because I'll probably be called back up here again. But our subdivision regulations call for interconnectedity of streets. We had a meeting last week. Councilman Overton had that meeting here, and we went into some detailed discussion as to why we have that policy in the subdivision regulations and the benefit, long-term benefit of the majority and of citizens throughout the town to have that type of interconnected street system, and how it will save capacity in the long run on these collector and arterial roadways. It's quite, at least in the traffic study, indicated that there'd be very little traffic that would be coming from Cumberland Park Point to Wildcat Run, which is the main entrance street right now into Twin Eagles. More likely, it's quite likely that possibly that residents in Twin Eagles would be using the streets in Cumberland Point, particularly while it's being built. So that would give them an additional opportunity to ingress and egress their subdivision other than the single access point that they have now. So I'm not sure what other issues you want me to bring up other than utilities and...
Prior to this evening's public hearing, had you been exposed to the deed concerns that were mentioned? Do you know anything about that?
Prior to tonight, yes, it was brought to our attention. Now, deed restrictions are not something that we make our decisions on. Deed restrictions can be changed. Some of them are even illegal now, so I guess our attorney can maybe be able to explain that in more detail. So we don't make those decisions based, we're basing our decisions based on adopted policy by the council and the planning commission.
Mr. Gregory, do you want to talk about capacity, or you just want to say it's all good?
It's all good.
Do you, seriously, what is our, you had years, you had, how many years we were good for at one point, I remember you saying, on the sewer and water? I'm sorry. Just like to see your smiling face.
Our treatment plant has the capacity to treat about twelve and a half organic and 30 million for capacities. That's good, probably for the next 25 years, 25 to 30 years. Water system, we're in good shape. We're about half capacity on our treatment capacities now. Water and sewer lines, they all have to be put in according to the state and our specifications as to fire flows and all that information that we have to have. We approve the plans before they go to the state, and then they have to get approval from the state, and then the developer puts them in, and then we take them over and maintain them. But everything is... But everything that's been put in has been upsized to take care of this particular development in sewer and also water. Any more questions?
Thank you, Mr. Gregory.
Thank you. Mr. McCord, is there anything else? Anything else from this council for Mr. McCord?
Not unless y'all have any more specific questions.
None? All right, any, any further discussion here? Okay, this is Resolution R1811-68. All in favor, indicate by saying aye. Opposed, please say no. Okay, Resolution R1811-68 does pass unanimously. Item number six is Resolution R1811-69, Councilman Overton.
Thank you, Mayor. This is resolution, City of Galton, Summerton County, Tennessee, annexing 12.35 acre partial, tax map 114, partial 07, 047-01, located north of Highway 25, west of Wildcat Run, to the City of Galton, authorizing the annex property to be indicated on official zoning atlas, authorizing assessment of annexed area, assignment of annexed area to a council district, repealing conflict of orders, providing for severability, and providing for an effective date. I so move.
Motion by Councilman Overton, second by Councilman Alexander. Is there any discussion? This is Resolution R1811-69. All in favor, please say aye. Opposed, please say no. Does pass unanimously. Item number seven is second reading on ordinance 01811-61. And Councilman Overton, you're going to get a break eventually, but not yet.
Thank you, Mayor. This is order, City of Galton, Summerton County, Tennessee, rezoning 12.35 acre partial from A Agriculture of Highway 20, A Agriculture Residential District to MU Mixed Use District, located north of Highway 25, west of Wildcat Run, and approving a preliminary master development plan for Cumberland Point, containing 100 attached townhomes, residential lots, six open space tracks, and three public right of ways on 27.86 acres located north and south of Highway 25 and west of Wildcat Run, authorizing to the vision to be indicated on official zoning atlas, repealing conflict of orders, providing for severability, and providing for an effective date. And I so move.
Motion to approve by Councilman Overton, second by Councilman Alexander. Is there any discussion? Councilwoman Love?
Could I get Mr. McCord to come up and address those concerns that were brought up about the density?
Yes, ma'am. The comments made about density were initially identified in an application by the developers of the property, where they were going to only buy the 12.35 acres. What they did is acquired additional property, and it's contiguous across the street, Highway 25. And that's why you had a public hearing, and you will be also taking action on an amendment to the Fairview, or Fairway Farms' master development plan. Because what they're doing is incorporating an additional fourteen acres roughly of property as part of the Cumberland Point development. So the Cumberland Point development increases from twenty, from twelve, a little over twelve acres to twenty-seven acres. Now, Fairway.
If I, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Now, Fairway Farms will be decreasing in open space by about fourteen acres. However, they still far exceed the minimum required open space for their master development plan.
I guess what I'm not understanding is, are they not building houses across the road? But they're using that acreage to, to average it?
That's right. That's right.
So there is going to be a high, if you just don't see those, if you don't think of the houses across the road. I mean, that's, that's putting a lot on those little, those lots.
Well, it's, it's typically applied, it's called clustering, and it's, it's used in other places in the city as well. Carrollton has clustered development. There's several other developments that are clustered, meaning that they put the residential portion or the units in the developable portions and save the rest. In this case, some of it's wetland, some of it's upland that's going to be developed as open space and parkland. So that's, that's commonly done.
That may be common, but it just doesn't seem right. You know? Or to me.
Many of your developments throughout the city are that way. Fairview's that way, has a golf course in the middle of it. All that is, counts as part of their density.
Okay, thank you for answering that. And then about the traffic, has, have we gotten those traffic study about this, about that area where people will be crossing the street?
The applicants have done a thorough traffic investigation. Detailed traffic study is not required until the final master development plan. However, the applicants have gone ahead and prepared the detailed traffic study. Engineering has reviewed that, and the crosswalk that's going to be provided along Highway 25 is very similar, if not identical, to the ones that are provided in the City of White House that we've talked about in other public meetings, where they cross Highway 31W and Highway 76 there in White House. So it's not something that is unusual, that it may be a little different. It's, it's not much different than the crosswalk that we have on Big Station Camp Boulevard, which has a higher speed limit than Red River Road.
So the traffic study won't really be taken into consideration, those cars that would be brought about by new development?
Yes, it was. And that's why I was saying, even though we have a formal traffic study required at the FMDP stage, the applicant has prepared a more detailed study than is required at this stage. Assigning trips to the various roadways and intersections, not just to and from the development, but in the area, including 109 and Highway 25. The state is working on a project now to make improvements to that intersection.
I see. I'm just concerned about that large number of petition signers that are unhappy about this, too. Thank you for answering those questions.
Any further discussion? This is second reading, did you have something? Ma'am, I'm sorry, this isn't time for public comment, unless. That's okay, that's okay. Council, there is someone here indicating that they wish to speak. Do you wish to allow them to, or? Motion by Councilman Fennell, second by Councilwoman Love. All in favor? Opposed? Okay, ma'am, you can come forward if you like. Sorry, I know it's, it's awkward for people that are not used to this.
And I apologize, and I came late to the game anyway. My concern is, my name is April Schroder, and I am on 351 Goodman Drive, Gallatin, in Fairway Farms subdivision. And looking over and listening to everything that has been discussed, my concern, and I think that most people can appreciate this who live in communities, is that when we purchased in Fairway Farms eleven years ago, I'm sorry, I don't like to talk in public, but it's concerning to me. So when we purchased in Fairway Farms eleven years ago, it was a very wonderful subdivision. And so we knew what we were getting across the street, not across the street, but we knew we were getting Meadow Glen, and we were up for that when we signed up. What we didn't sign up for was this Cumberland Point that's a hundred townhomes in a very small parcel of land that has access to cross Highway 21 to come into our subdivision. There's, we back up to a creek, and there's another creek, and it makes a V shape. And so in this V shape, it's a flood plain where nobody can build. And that's where we chose our home, because we knew that we would not have anyone behind us. And my husband and I have eight children together, and this was a, a safe spot for us to raise our children while we still stay in the City of Gallatin. So with that being said, this V, this spot, is now going to be a common land for Cumberland Point to come and access, and to come behind our homes and walk in our subdivisions. And in our subdivisions, we are having problems with three cars being stolen last week, because our subdivision is already getting larger with more homes put in it, and, and the lot size is smaller. So you take that and you add to that Meadow Glen, which is already being developed. And now they want to put Cumberland Gap across Highway 25, and have them have access to our subdivision. And as a homeowner, I'm, I'm very concerned. As a mother of eight children, I'm concerned with the amount of foot traffic that's going to be right behind my backyard, literally. And as a citizen of Gallatin, I'm concerned, because we keep putting up more and more apartments and townhomes, and having this mass influx of people, instead of developing our Gallatin town while we have the opportunity to make it a wonderful place with wonderful homes, instead of these apartment complexes that can house hundreds of people. And where are they going to go? And, and we were voted the best city in America because of our quaintness, because of the small-town feel. And now we are influxing all these people to our town, and they're not all going to be good. And so it concerns me, and we have options to sell and move out, of course. But one of the reasons we built in Fairway Farms was because it was a nice subdivision. It was a growing subdivision in Gallatin, and it was a beautiful subdivision. And having the access of these hundred townhomes, and the people that live there coming into our nice subdivision is a concern. And I think that if you reflect on that in your own lives, and think about, what if this was built in your subdivision? And these people don't even live in your subdivision, but they have access to come across the street and enjoy the amenities that are going to be there for them. And, and we pay a nice, high amount of money for our piece of property, and that same retail will not be available to them, but yet they have all of our amenities as far as this, this land space goes. So I would just like you all to consider that when you're making a motion to allow it or not to allow it, and think about what it would mean for you and your family in the same situation was happening in your subdivision. I thank you for your time, I thank you for allowing me to speak. I appreciate it.
Thank you, Ms. Schroder. Okay, so we are back. Ladies and gentlemen, let's not applaud or anything like that, thank you. So we are back on discussion on ordinance 01811-61. Any further discussion? Okay, this is second reading on ordinance 01811-61. All in favor, please say aye. Opposed, please say no. Okay, I have six in favor, one opposed. It does pass. Sorry, my stopwatch is going off over there. Item number eight is second reading on ordinance 01811-62, Councilman Overton.
Thank you, Mayor. This is order City of Galton, Summerton County, Tennessee, approving amended preliminary master development plan for Fairway Farms, and amended preliminary master development plan for Meadow Glen at Fairway Farms, located south of Highway 25, west of Highway 109, north of Long Hallo Pike, authorizing provisions to be indicated on official zoning atlas, repealing conflict of orders, providing for severability, and providing for an effective date. I so move.
Motion by Councilman Overton. Second by Councilman Alexander. Is there any discussion? This is second reading on ordinance 01811-62. All in favor, please say aye. Opposed, please say no. Okay, again, it passes six to one. Item number nine is second reading on ordinance 01812-67, Councilwoman Love.
Thank you, Mayor. This is an ordinance appropriating $1,799.75 in donations from TVA and Rogers Group to the Gallatin Beautiful Commission. I so move.
Motion by Councilwoman Love, second by Councilman Hayes. Any discussion? This is second reading on ordinance 01812-67. All in favor, say aye. Opposed, say no. It does pass unanimously. Item 10 is second reading on ordinance 01901-1, Councilman Alexander.
Thank you, Mayor. This is order, amended government issue code, chapter four, animal by adding section four dash four, cruel to animal prohibited, treating of animals, and I so move, teething of animals.
Motion by Councilman Alexander, second by Councilman Fennell. Any discussion? This is second reading on ordinance 01901-1. All in favor, say aye. Opposed, say no. It passes unanimously. Item 11 is first reading on ordinance 01901-2, Vice Mayor Camp.
Thank you, Mayor. This is an order appropriating $50,000 for the Gallatin Musical Festival. So move.
Motion by Vice Mayor, motion by Vice Mayor Camp, second by Councilman Overton. Is there any discussion?
Yes, have y'all had any meetings on this?
We've just, we've had, well, gosh, we've had several back since early last fall. So working on booking artists, and, and Mr. Henshaw could tell you more, but working on, you know, figuring out what we're going to do differently this year, and booking artists, and getting the people and places in place with a large emphasis on selling some sponsorship, so.
Look forward to it. It's always a suggestion I'd like to throw out there, it might be inaccessible.
We are well aware. I think, I think Mr. Henshaw had a conversation about that today. We have a tourism grant, I might, we shouldn't say this, there's a tourism grant we're eligible to apply for. And that's one of the things that we're considering, would that give us, you know, a good opportunity to be successful.
Look forward to it.
So, thank you. So we have a motion and a second. All in favor, second reading, no, first reading, I'm sorry, ordinance 01901-2. All in favor, say aye. Opposed, say no. Does pass unanimously. Item 12 is Resolution R1901-5, Councilman Fennell.
Thank you, Mayor. This is a resolution authorizing the issuance, sale, and payment of up to six million in aggregate principal amount of gas revenue bonds for the City of Gallatin. I so move.
Motion by Councilman Fennell, second by Councilman Alexander. Is there any discussion? This is Resolution R1901-5. All in favor, say aye. Opposed, say no. Passes unanimously. Item 13 is Resolution R1901-6, Councilman Fan.
Resolution authorizing contract with DPC Incorporated for phone replacement software and service, which requires license agreement with 3CX Software LTD. I so move.
Motion by Councilman Fan, second by Councilwoman Love. Is there any discussion? This is Resolution R1901-6. All in favor, please say aye. Opposed, please say no. It does pass unanimously. Item 14 is Resolution R1901-8, Councilman Hayes.
Yeah, this is a resolution approving new job description for planning technical zoning enforcement officer in a planning department. Motion to approve.
Have a motion by Councilman Hayes, the second by Councilman Alexander. This was not, was not discussed at the last work session, correct? And, but as you. It was under other business? Regardless.
Did this come back, did this come up under other business at the last?
I don't think it did. This is.
Okay, then we have to amend the rules to even.
To allow consideration. So probably I should have you withdraw your second and your motion. And then we entertain a motion to consider this, since it was not discussed at work session. Motion to consider by Councilman Alexander, second by Councilman Hayes. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye. Opposed, please say no. And then we're back to the resolution, and so a motion to approve, and then we can discuss. Motion by Councilman Hayes, second by Councilman Alexander. It's now open for discussion. Mr. McCord may wish to address this with you all, but I will tell you that this is a, I guess I'd say it's a result of a discussion that, or actually a result of his idea, that he did discuss with me about restructuring somewhat with some vacancies in his department, and him in the process of hiring some new people. And I really support what he's asking for. It's actually not an increase in cost, it's not an advancement of a position. It's actually more of a refining of a position, so. Any questions related to that? Any questions for Mr. McCord? Okay, with that, this is Resolution R1901-8. All in favor, please say aye. Opposed, please say no. It does pass unanimously. That concludes our regular agenda this evening, and it moves now into other business. So now would be the time that anyone with other business on this council can bring it forward. Councilman Overton.
I just want a quick question for the city attorney. Have we heard anything else about our unsafe building lately?
I have had some, some meetings with a representative, but they're not scheduled to come back to us until later this month. As far as I'm aware. I haven't had meetings, it's been about three weeks ago, the last time I heard from them. So I'm not certain, not certain where, what's going to happen, yes.
Councilwoman Fennell?
I'd just like to make a report as to, as to what happened on planning the other night. And it concerns several of us on here. I think Ms. McCauley, myself, Craig, and Mr. Fan, is that we're having a development that is being built called the Knoll down Browns Lane. There was a connectivity road right there that was in the planning unit development that was approved. Well, the, the builders, seeing that they thought it was going to be a safety issue, where you come down Browns Lane, you kind of go over a road, and then there's a connectivity road coming on to Browns Lane. We, there was a vote that come up whether or not we should take the road out and just leave it the walking trail right there, or, or we should vote to leave the, the road in there with the walking trail. The vote did happen. It was two people against the road being there for safety issues. And that was myself and John Purrier, the rest of the planning department voted to keep the road in there for connectivity to the development of the. to the development of the Knoll. So that's, that's the only thing I'd like to say.
Thank you. You have other business?
Is there anything we can do about that? I spoke to our, I spoke to our engineer myself, and our engineer had some great concerns about opening that road up there. Is there anything we can do at this point, Susan?
It was voted, as I understand, I wasn't there. It was voted to be a minor amendment, so it doesn't come to this council. Is there anything that can happen within the planning commission? Can they?
They could reconsider.
Could the prevailing side ask to reconsider?
Does it have the final say so on, on the road?
Not under, not currently as our regs are, I'll have to get with Mr. McCord, but it's my understanding as our zoning ordinance is written and as our regs are written, it was, it was deemed as this correct a minor amendment, so it doesn't come before the spotting.
But the planning commission's prevailing side could ask to reconsider.
Yeah, but most time on an issue like that, Jimmy, the only way it would come to the city council would have to be a major amendment, and it comes up along with a man.
I understand how it comes back to us, and I wasn't at the planning meeting, but, you know, I know some of our staff has great concerns about this road and, and, you know, I, I've asked them and talked to them about it, and they do have great concerns about it, and it concerns me, and I don't know what the planning commission was thinking. I have no clue. Mr. Fennell serves on that force, and, and I guess he could explain more, but.
Well, we did, we did have the recommendation from Nick Tuttle that it was, it brought up a safety issue, and that's the only reason it worried me is 'cause you come down that road pretty, you know, thirty, thirty-five mile an hour, and then you're right there into a blind drive. But I was just reporting to the people that it affected in here.
Thank you. Anything else with other business? Okay, I have one item. It is a road closure. It is for. You want, go ahead, go ahead.
Excuse me. Uh, engineering and the coast department discussed this road out there, and we'd asked for it. If we couldn't get the road for connectivity, it'd be a fire access road for fire apparatus only, which we supported that because when the engine comes in, they gotta get out.
Yeah, I had heard that that was discussed as an option, too.
That's a requirement. We had for a fire access only there, you know, with a lay-down barrier that when they come in, they just drive over it. And we did bring that to the table, just wanted you to know that.
Yeah, I had heard that as well. Thank you. Okay, I have a street closure for your consideration, hopefully approval. This is for April thirteenth, twenty nineteen, Saturday morning, seven thirty a.m. to ten thirty a.m. It's from Station Camp High School and Lower Station Camp Creek Road. It says Lower Station Camp Creek Road from before the Vietnam Veterans Bridge to the Greenway entrance. And they're asking for closure, and it is for the Station Camp High School five K, although. Yeah, they do this every year. No, Bison Quarterback Club, I'm sorry.
They do it every year, and I'm, I'm making most of.
Yeah, and I do have all the required agency approvals on here. Motion to approve by Councilman Overton. Thank you, second by Councilwoman Love. All in favor, please say aye. Opposed, it is approved. Thank you all. Is there any other other business from our department heads this evening? Seeing none, we will move ahead to public recognition on non-agenda-related items. This is the time of the meeting where people who have issues of concern that are not on the agenda may come forward and address them. Again, we ask that you introduce yourself and share your address with us.
Good evening. Pascal Gervan, Long Hollow Pike, thirteen thirty-five. I want to talk about the noise ordinance, because we got told that the noise ordinance got changed. There was a new noise ordinance, but it looks like I cannot find it anywhere on the website of the city. And law enforcement don't, looks like don't have it too. So we got case where people work on Sunday, construction on Sunday, call law enforcement, and they based what they have, who looks like is the old ordinance, so they, they can't do anything. So I would like to make sure that the ordinance is uploaded on the website, that law enforcement have it, so they can actually do their job and enforce it.
It, it is, you have to go, if you go under city attorney, and you go into the municipal code, and you go into ordinances that have not yet been codified, you will find it there. There's a long list of ordinances that have not been codified, and it's in that list. And the law, law enforcement, I believe, does have the noise ordinance, yes.
And, and I would, I would suggest that that man in the white shirt, Chuck, raise your hand. Let him know what you're talking about, because they can certainly call on whoever's doing the construction on Sundays and, and exert some pressure to not do that, so.
And now that we are becoming a construction zone for the next twenty years, 'cause that's what it looks like, with everything popping, popping out like mushrooms. I think the seven a.m. to seven p.m., even on Saturday, is kind of gonna ride people crazy. People like to have the weekend happy, and if you have engines running all Saturday, that's maybe not gonna be good. So maybe there's something you guys can do about that.
What are we talking about, Mayor? What'd you say? What do you have, sir? What are you talking about?
Is it Kensington that's affecting you?
On Long Hollow Pike.
Long Hollow Pike, oh.
Yeah. So we, we have the noise from the construction on the corner of the highway, but it's not just for us. It's for all your constituents, because with the amount of construction you have now in Gallatin, you know, you, you need to think about the quality of life of people who moved here and who moved here for a reason, like the lady was saying, they moved here because it was a nice city with nice people. And now with the difference of density and all the construction, you, that affect the quality of life of your constituents, so.
We have a problem.
Something maybe to be done. Even seven in the morning, if you have people working by night, that's it. It's done seven in the morning. You know, excavation and hammer and you, you need to come once on Long Hollow Pike at seven in the morning when they start hammering on the highway, and you're gonna see, you're gonna see the noise it makes. It's unbelievable.
As the mayor said, that gentleman in the white shirt back there, he's our code enforcement. Be sure you see him, okay, before you leave.
For sure.
He's taking care of it before. We've had a problem in the city before.
All right. Thank you all.
Thank you.
Good evening, good evening, council. My name is Charles Brinkley, and I reside at one fifty-five Alpha Drive, Gallatin, Tennessee, three seven zero six six dash five one two one. I'd be remiss if I didn't come up and give the city officials a compliment of a big thank you. You remember last month on the twenty-first of January, the MLK Day was celebrated, and we had a unit that marched, starting from the front of the city hall here and going to Gallatin Senior High School. On behalf of the Gallatin Sumner County NAACP, who sponsored the unit that they marched, want to publicly thank you, you, and you, the city council. Would like to thank the mayor for the use of facilities with our youth.
Not my facilities.
Study, uh, using this facility for our youth and young adult on the legacy and the life of Dr. Martin Luther King. It was very interesting. In our march, when we got to Gallatin Senior High, there was about two hundred and fifty people there. We had good news coverage. Attorney Jim Hawkins was a guest speaker. Andrew Turner was our grand marshal. We would like to thank Chief Victor Williams, the fire department, Chief Bandit, the Gallatin Police Department for leading our parade. The first responders, MSA people for being in attendance, and especially Mr. Zach Wickerson for presiding, for providing the first sanitation truck that we have. We want to have our parade a little larger, a little more interesting. And we just thank you for your, those who marched, we, we thank you for your participation. We thank you for your concern for this national holiday, which we will try to celebrate each year. I think everybody here know what Dr. King stood for, what he advocated, what he was concerned about. He wanted to end poverty. He wanted to increase the safety of sanitation workers, well, better wages for them. On that particular day, before he was assassinated, I won't say this, I'm gonna sit down. When he went to march to advocate for the sanitation workers in Memphis, remember in seventy-eight? That before, sixty-eight, before he was assassinated, right after that march, he was assassinated at the Lorraine Hotel in Memphis, Tennessee, in the balcony. Two men had gotten crushed in a sanitation because of the working condition wasn't appropriate. And, and I could stand here all day, but I'm gonna sit down. I wanna thank you, and we're gonna do the same thing next year. And we look forward to this occasion again. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mr. Brinkley. And on behalf of this council, I'll say our compliments to you and the other organizers as well. It was particularly exciting this year to see the youth program grow, because it's grown steadily, and it seemed like this year they just had it, an explosion of attendees, so it was great to see that, so.
And Mayor, if I may add, Mr. Jim Hawkins was one of the best speakers I believe that we've ever had at the NAACP March. So you all done a fantastic job getting Jim Hawkins. He done an excellent job, excellent job.
Mr. DeBoer, do you come in to speak or play with Mr. McCord?
I've got to go see the president here in a little bit. My name is Joe DeBoer, and I live at one double oh seven Hart Street in Gallatin, Tennessee. And that's a hard act to follow, 'cause I believe Mr. Brinkley is one of the best, one of us here in Gallatin. And I appreciate what he brings to the table every time, all the time. I got a couple of little, little dillies for you. Number one, I got a little surprised the other day when I reached in there and grabbed my pie, my, uh, bill from GPU. He left. Well, he ought to leave. But that, this not, this wasn't on him. Seems as though somebody somewhere along the line, and I'm gonna blame a Buck Rogers for this, because he's the only one standing in the, in the wake back there. Somebody miscalculated some. Yeah, old buck. Seems as though they miscalculated how much stormwater I've got. Miss Connie? More money. I paid everything since last July to this coming July, because I didn't think too much of the way you all handled your billing. And we're robbing Peter to pay Paul. Now it's time for Paul to pay Peter back. Because I know what you did, Mayor. You said, "Well, we'll just wait off to halfway through the year." And of course, that's after the election. Nobody will be raising a stink about it.
Now, Mr. DeBoer, I am going to take offense to that, because I had nothing to do with that.
Who did it?
The engineering was working through the billing with Gallatin Public Utilities, and.
I'm not fussing about that. I know about them.
Well, you said me specifically, so I take issue with that.
I'm talking about when y'all, y'all started the year with your money, getting your money in.
Well, that was, I mean, technically it would be the council, but it was a function of not being able to get everything done.
I understand, Mayor. We know how you are. Anyway, I know where it really resides, is a lady named Watson, so I had to get on her. But anyway, we want to take care of this, because guess what? This is absolutely needed in our community. Uh, if I can remember, Mr. Stiles talking about working on a place down there on Duncan Street. A lady was getting washed away, and they put in some concrete down there to save her butt. That's, that's fine and dandy. And they've worked in our neighborhood a little bit to handle that stuff. So it's needed. My only complaint is how you go about collecting it, but now, that's beside the point. Now, the next issue, I got two of them. I get to go up there and check on how come the thing was so high. Well, I come to find out that my buddy over here, Mr. McCord, looks at the, looks at my property plot, and he says, "My gosh, son," says, "You're, you're in violation." And I said, "What's going on? What's going on, brother McCord?" He says, "You've got a gazebo in your front yard, and you're not supposed to have one out there." Now, Mayor, I didn't put the gazebo in the front yard. Now, the question is, what do you all want me to do about it? Turn it down or what?
I don't, I don't think anybody's asking you to address that at this time.
Well, all I'm saying is my neighbor heard about it, and they were kind of gonna fuss, because they want to go out there and, and have a picnic in the gazebo.
Well, I, I would, I would say with confidence that they won't allow your neighbor to build one, but.
Oh, well, I, I would say some of these boys are dead ringers back here. They're rough. So I just wanted to check on that. Mayor, I wouldn't, I wouldn't put anything up unless I checked with Mr. Chuck back there. Not even our house out back with a little moon in it. So I, I leave you all tonight with this wonderful opportunity. Now, listen, if you want to fuss about my gazebo, I'll tell you what we can do, Mayor. We'll put, we'll put Mr. Zach to work over there, and he can park it out there in one of y'all's pieces of ground where, where.
Oh, you've done that, you've done that, your gazebo to the city, so you'll have less impervious surface.
And they can use it out there at, at, at the Triple Creek Park or wherever you want to park it.
Well, you should get with Mr. Brown about that.
So now, it's all on you. Now, if you want to fuss about it, we'll take care of that fussing. We'll take care of it. Y'all have a great night.
You too, thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak under public recognition on non-agenda-related items, come forward.
I really don't know how I'm gonna follow this. First of all, history is really beautiful, isn't it? I just was thinking about one question on the deed that Suzanne would talked about for Cumberland Place. Is it legal or is it illegal? Could I ask your lawyer that?
I haven't seen the deed restriction, but that's not something that the city, the city doesn't make its determination based on what's in someone's deed restriction.
Okay. And then I'd just like to mention that I, by the way, you, you owe me some black ink for my printer, because I went out of the room when I printed it, and I didn't know it was gonna be this thick. And you know, the printer ink always costs more than the printer. But, and under the subdivision regulations for Sumner County, Tennessee, I just keep always seeing that all this can only be granted if it's safe, if it's safe for the residents. From what I've heard here, what you just approved is not safe. It hasn't, it has to be, the only way that you're going to make this project safe is if you can get somebody to work with Tennessee T-Dot to work on the roads. Otherwise, it's not gonna be safe until they do, and I'll bet you they won't work on 109 for ten years. But I'm just guessing. And thank you for the education lesson. It was beautiful.
Thank you, Mr. Jermaine. Anyone else wishing to speak this evening? Gotta move quickly. Getting close to adjournment. I'm not saying you have to move quickly right now. I'm saying as far as indicating you wish to speak. I'm sorry.
Good evening. My name is Edwin Schraddan, and I live at one, at six seven one Community Court in Twin Eagles. And I am neighbors to both the Carney properties behind and to the horse farm. And that, that's kind of irrelevant. My concern is about getting adequate utilities for all of the additions. I've heard this previously this evening. I've heard this previously this evening, but I just wanna cite my experience. I lived for fourteen years in Goodlettsville in Indian Hills, and when they added Twelve Stones Crossing, they didn't put in adequate pipe for the additional buildings that went in. And I and two or three of my neighbors, they put so much pressure in the existing pipes in order to pump water up over the hills over to Twelve Stone, Twelve, uh, Twelve Stones Crossing, that my water heater broke at the seams, and I had to buy a new water heater. So I just wanna encourage anybody that's approving all of these buildings, and there's a lot more than I would like to see. I'd like to see individual homes, of course. But for Pete's sake, get enough pipe size to carry the water required. I heard someone say for fire protection, and I know that there's a pressure requirement for domestic and a different, uh, pressure and volume required for fire protection. But, uh, with all the additional going in, I would hope that we won't get our pressure pushed up to the point that our water heaters are breaking, so.
We hope not either. That's crazy, Seth.
Well, I, I was a civil engineer for thirty-nine years and nine months and, uh, was invited to find the exit. And I've done a little bit of water pressure calculation, so, uh, I know that it's very important, and someone said that they've already checked on this, and I, and I hope they have, because my experience was, uh, unhappy whenever they try to put too much pressure through. And I, by the way, my residence there on, uh, Community Court is one of the first, uh, developed, part of the Twin Eagles development. So I know our lines are not new, and, uh, please make sure that we've got adequate capacity without excess pressure. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. If you'd like to see the plans and make your own assessment, I'm sure they'd welcome you to hear what you had to say. Anyone else this evening? Okay, I see no one indicating they wish to speak, so I entertain a motion to adjourn. Motion to adjourn by Councilman Overton, second by Councilman Alexander. All in favor say aye. We are adjourned. Ladies and gentlemen, have a lovely evening, and we look forward to seeing you again soon.